It is six o'clock and it is April the 12th, 2022. We are in the council chambers and I am calling the meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call Candace.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Sorry, I can't really hear anybody.
Here.
Sorry, thank you. Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Kathy Cop.
Here.
Okay, and as we start tonight's meeting before our presentation by the Platteville Library, I would like to offer sincere thank you to Isaac Shanley for his service to the community through both not only the common council, but a number of committees that he's chaired. I know we're going to miss him on Water and Sewer and I'm sure he's going to miss his other committee assignments, right? That's why he's smiling as he is because of how much he's going to miss these meetings. But Isaac, it has been a pleasure having you on the council. Thank you for your service to our community and don't be shy about coming back and letting us know how we're doing.
So I already recruited him, so he has advised that he would be more than willing to stay on multiple committees for.
Good.
I'm not sure about multiple.
Wow. Yeah, so Isaac, thank you. And at our organizational meeting in a week, we will seat the newly elected members to the council and one of those is Lynn Parrott, who has now been elected to her position. And the other is Todd Casper, who is in our audience tonight. And thank you, Todd, for not only coming tonight, but also both of you for entering your names and for running for council. Adam and I were on a league conference call today and we found out that there was one community that had an alder elected with five write-in votes and then another community that had an alder elected with seven write-in votes. So I am really pleased that both of you pursued running and thank you, both of you. So now we'll go on with the Platteville Public Library update and Jessie, we would invite you to come up to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessie Lee Jones. I'm the director at the Platteville Public Library. Some of you may know that last week was National Library Week, so about this time every year, I love to come to council and just provide an update on what we've been up to in the past year and welcome any questions at the end of my presentation. So you can see here, just to kind of kick us off, we have an array of bookmark contest entries. We do an annual bookmark contest, which is going on currently. So if you have any artists in your life, send them our way. So the annual make your mark bookmark contest is a fun way to get some community engagement. There we are. Okay, so naturally, part of 2021 was just responding to COVID. You may recall, two years ago, we split our team into two cohorts, the emus and the wombats. Don't really ask me where that came from. But we, so we split them up early on in the pandemic just to keep people safe and so that we could ensure that the library was always able to be staffed. We were able to reunite them in May of 2021. And you can see a little bit of our timeline of how we were able to serve the public. And we were very pleased in November to go back to full-service operation. Okay, so we offered virtual and in-person learning opportunities to reach new and infrequent users and build strong connections among area residents. I hope you all had an opportunity to participate in some of these. It's been really fun to watch our community come together in new ways. Okay, so we found safe ways to offer some of our most popular and longstanding programs. So our Peepso Rama, which are currently on display at the library, has been one of our longest-standing library programs and it's just a fun, unique way to re-envision a book using marshmallows. Okay, oh, I think I skipped. Okay, so we provided a wide variety of programming thanks to our many community volunteers and partners throughout the community. I'm obviously not going to name them all, but as you can see, we do partner with a lot of different organizations and individuals within the city of Platteville and beyond. And I will, I would like to highlight our 2021 community involvement list. This originated as the Community Involvement Fair several years ago. It is an active listing of various ways that individuals can get involved within the city of Platteville, service organizations and whatnot. So we strengthen our connections with the Platteville School District by offering a variety of services, including welcoming the kids back for school visits. And I think the staff's favorite time of year is when the first graders get their first library card. It's very exciting. In an effort to raise community awareness of some of our services, we received a donation from the Library Foundation to reintroduce our dialist story. Each week, we record stories and individuals can call in and listen to a story. It was super popular about 30 years ago and it has become popular through the pandemic as well. And I am pleased to report that we do have stories in Spanish on there as well. Okay, so as a city, accessibility, inclusivity and diversity has become a top priority for us. So you can see, we have done a variety of efforts to ensure that we are being a welcoming and inclusive place. I think some of our most exciting ones would be becoming a fine-free library in 2021. And also, while it may seem like a small thing, adding our preferred name option within Verso, so Verso is that catalog that allows us to look patrons up and check items out to them. So it's really important that our patrons know that we recognize them as they identify. So staff development is also a top priority within our current five-year strategic plan. So we attended a variety of virtual webinars, conferences and workshops. Many of those were centered around, you know, the future of the library. What does a post-pandemic library look like? How do you cope with enforcing COVID protocols within a public library? And I think we have really become a unified front as a library, as a staff, and I think that was actually very beneficial during the year. So adjusting to the new library building, this is also part of our five-year strategic plan. I'm not really going to spend too much time on this, but just know that we are continuing to evaluate our spaces and make sure that we are maintaining, maintaining a high standard within the public spaces and then maximizing the staff work areas as well. So this was what occupied a good deal of my time in 2021. We did have a lot of staff changes, some of them very happy in terms of retirements. Some people have relocated. So I am happy to report at this moment, we are fully staffed and I think everyone, we have an excellent team right now. We have a very engaged group of individuals working at the library. So in terms of other fun stuff that we were able to do in 2021, the Library Foundation continues to be a very dedicated partner to the Platteville Public Library. We partnered with them to host festive Fridays in December as part of the Main Street Program and Chamber of Commerce's Hometown Friday Nights. I feel like half of, I feel like maybe there was another slide that we missed, but it is in your packet. So just know that we are here to serve the community. We love our jobs and we are always open to feedback from you all and from our patrons as well. So, okay, yeah, so we project a positive attitude. It's kind of our, our, our last slide. We project a positive attitude. We work with joy. Does anyone have any questions for me tonight?
Questions for Jessie? Ken?
Well, this is a question for about three people here and relates to human resources. We've talked about this in the past as far as funding for the library. I am wondering, as far as the employee handbook, whether in that handbook now, there'll be a section where people that are leaving a job, whether resigning or retiring, whether they'll be interviewed as far as their experience here at Platteville, whether it be the library, whether it be at the City Hall, whatever. So that's a question for you. It's a question for Nicola. It's a question for the city manager. So I'm wondering if there's going to be a special section to carry out that function as far as interviewing people as they leave. You're working on handbook now. I've seen it for a couple of people, so that's what I'm asking.
Yes, cool. Do you want to go for the library first?
If I may, I have always conducted exit interviews. Anytime someone leaves the library and I do save those, they're all on file. And I think the city does as well. I guess I can't speak fully to what the city procedure is, but the library procedure is to do exit interviews.
And yours will stay separate from the city?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy to share.
Yeah, it's something that obviously with our new human resource specialist, that's the new position that we created kind of last year. That has been working, obviously with the Platteville Library, to kind of have a cooperative relationship back and forth. To answer your question, Ken, it's not something that specifically we have written in the handbook at this time, but there is a separate policy that has been created before I got here, which if somebody, right now, it's on a request basis, so the employee that's leaving, that's something that, as you kind of indicated, we're looking at the handbook and potentially as Chad, our human resource specialist, is working on kind of revamping the orientation and kind of recruitment, whether that's recruiting in or somebody that's out, that is a policy now that we do do exit interviews for the exiting employees.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Jessie? And fine, Lee is going well?
Going very well, yeah. And I can give you an update into 2022, just briefly, with the removal of the mask requirement within city buildings and just in terms of, you know, the city kind of opening up a little more. We have seen usage increase dramatically, so that's very exciting. Programming is in full swing. We just started our spring Storytime series today. Since we planned this so far in advance, we weren't sure what COVID would be doing. We are doing them outdoor in city park and we had 13 in attendance today. So I imagine it's only going to grow as the weather gets nicer, so we're very excited about that.
And you'll have a bicycle, book bicycle this summer.
Yep, and the book bike was out there today. So yeah, we just got it tuned up and it's ready to roll. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, thank you, Jessie, and thank you to all the library staff for the great job that you do in serving their community.
And thank you for your support.
Okay, we'll move on now to consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. If you want separate discussion, please let me know. We have the council minutes from March 22nd. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for March. There are no appointments for boards and commissions tonight. We have licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol, as were included in your packet. A street closing permit for Main Street from Chestnut to Water Street for the Second Annual Platteville Cruise Inn on Main on Saturday, July 16th, from 3:00 to 8:00 by the Southwest Wisconsin Auto Club. I believe that's also in conjunction with the Southwest Music Festival, and I believe we issued a permit for that earlier. And then we have the council organizational meeting and swearing in of new council members coming up next Tuesday, April 19th at 5:00. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and approval, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Candace will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have citizens' comments, observations and petitions, if any. I've had nobody register from the public to speak at this point in time. Is there any council member who would like to speak at this time? Otherwise, I would congratulate the fire department on what I understand was a very successful pancake breakfast on Sunday. I understand you served 850 or so adults. Nobody talked to me about how many kids that might have included. They just said 850 or so adults. So I think that was a very successful endeavor. And thank you to you, Ryan, and all the guys and gals and folks that are associated with that. And I would like to continue to extend congratulations and thanks to Ryan and the fire department for their hosting Senator Tammy Baldwin earlier this week to talk about and to thank her for the $7 million contribution, I'm going to call it a contribution, to our fire station. So anybody with anything else? Okay, then, in the packet, there were several reports. There's the Water and, oh, I did miss one thing. A special welcome to at least five folks in the audience tonight, two of which are in an engineering class that they're here for, three of which are in a business communication class they're in. So welcome to our UWP students who are in attendance tonight. And I apologize for, I did come and meet you, I forgot to mention that. Okay, now moving on to reports. Water and Sewer Commission?
Audition.
Audition.
Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals?
An audition.
Housing Authority?
No addition.
Airport Commission, Kathy?
No additions.
Commission on Aging?
No additions.
Okay, other reports that were in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report for March and the Airport Financial Report for March. Any questions on either of those financial reports? Okay, Task Force on Inclusion, Diversity and Equity, the TIDE report was in our packet. Anything specific?
No, they can, they're continuing to work on kind of the community guide that potentially is going to be a resource for anybody either coming to our community or that is experiencing kind of homelessness or looking for resources. So that is something that they're planning on coming in front of you here on Tuesday, May 10th, to kind of have the joint session, which was one of our strategic planning items, to kind of talk about that and hopefully get the green light to kind of move that forward. And then they've just continued to talk about particular items that they would like to kind of take on or continue to discuss. One of them has kind of been mostly about how to be a welcoming community, obviously with the information that has come out about Afghan refugees now being relocated to the community, kind of taking more of a looking at that approach and thinking about how we can obviously extend that to all community members and kind of look at that from a different lens. And then continuing to kind of look at different inclusivity, diversity and equity topics. We've been working with the university on potentially some joint trainings that could go out to not only the TIDE Commission, but also staff, council, everybody else in the community. So we're continuing to kind of find tune those.
And then there were department progress reports in the packet. Anybody with any questions on those? Ken?
I have some questions and comments on parks and recreation. And looking at that, I looked at the Shelter Valley View and I looked at Harrison Park. And my first question is about the stealing of signs. Now, the sign you say here, the cost is $430 each.
Yes, sir.
Who makes the sign? Is that something that is purchased? And how has that come about?
Yeah, each time that the sign is actually taken, we just replace it with the person that had made it before and get a new sign so that I wouldn't have to redesign it. But that has been the cost.
That's the cost. And the sign, I, my question is, I don't know if I got, heard the answer, but is the sign made by here in Platteville or somebody else sends it to Platteville?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
That's what.
Contractor in town.
It's contractor in town.
Contractor in town, okay. Now, the sign stolen at Harrison Park and the one at Valley View, they're both basically identical as far as construction. And I found that looking at the setup as far as the sign, the posts are very good as far as the setup, but I would say that the attachment to the post is substandard. And I'll give you a little information on that. There's a small piece of wood there that's 1 and 3/8 by 1 and 3/8 by 41 inches long. It has about three screws in it to hold it to the post and three screws to hold the sign. So I call it substandard. All people have to do is either push with their hand or pull with their hands or kick it and the screws wouldn't be more if it's only 1 and 3/8, more than probably half an inch into the wood. So I would recommend that we put a sign back at Valley View and of course, I want to see a sign also at Harrison Park. And a better means must be to attach the sign to the post. Okay, then I, as an added thing, I looked at Valley View as far as what needs repair. Valley View, the doors need to be painted on the main shelter where the bathrooms are. There's a post in the yard out front that somebody pushed over, pulled out. That post was only in about 10 inches. I don't know what the switch on there is for.
That been for the water service reader?
Is that for what?
For the water service reader.
Okay, okay, so it was pulled out, lined around. And then the shelter, there's a shelter there. I would recommend that you use fascia instead of wood on that shelter that take away the labor. And it needs painting now, so do that by eliminating painting and using fascia. And the paint, the ceiling within that shelter needs to be painted. The posts need to be painted. And those are my comments. And I think you had a comment about trees. So you say there's 117 acres of park and the trees as far as ash trees, is this a program to remove all the ash trees in the city? What is the program?
No, so we have identified, back in 2010, that tree program was implemented and there was, all the trees were identified. And since 2010, as you know, the ash bore grant came into about and we worked on removing trees from 2018 to 2021. But it wasn't just ash bore. We kind of recorded all the trees that needed to be removed. There was about 112 trees that needed to be removed. About 70 of those have been removed. Thanks to PAC, we've replaced almost the equivalent of 70 trees as well along city trails and parks and everything else. So it's moving along pretty good. We have several left to remove, but we're doing what we can.
So you've, you've taken out the trees along the street terraces?
Street terraces, parks, trails, yep.
And then as far as private owners, what happened?
Yes, so the private owner grant, we just, I finally just submitted the final numbers for the grant, but that ran till 2021. That ended, remember, we got 50% of the matching. So that grant would be about $18,000.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the private people have to do the removal on their own?
Now, they would have to do the removal on their own. There's no matching funds. They, they got to match up to $250 per tree when they removed them before.
Any type of funding for the private owners that might be come up in the future?
Not currently, but that doesn't mean that there isn't grants that can't be explored and we'll see what the DNR says. I do have another meeting with Brian with the DNR coming up here shortly, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are my questions.
Okay, any other questions on department progress reports? Otherwise, we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. And the first item in our action agenda is the Award of Contract 2-22 Cedar Street Reconstruction. Howard?
Yes, thank you. This is a project in our capital project list, reconstructing Cedar Street from Chestnut to Hickory Street. Sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer, sidewalk, curb and gutter and street for the entire length. There were two alternate bids to replace. One would be to replace Water Main from Fort Chestnut. The other would have been to replace sanitary sewer. We had five bidders. The base bid was over budget, so we're not recommending any of the alternate bids. The base bid was over budget in all categories primarily due to the general level of inflation that we've had since we started working on these projects and budgeting for these projects last year. We have some instances here from letter from Delta III with some of the more specific items. So what we're looking at is that, that the city portion of the project is over budget by $64,500. Water and Sewer is over by $162,000. So what we're saying is that we have, I've got basically a list of ways to cover those costs. And we could fund with alternate sources of funding. Hickory and Gridley came in slightly under budget. Doesn't come anywhere close to covering the whole amount. We had some other projects. ARPA funding was originally allocated to Second Street Sidewalk and that's now fully funded by the COVID CDBG grant. That could be reallocated. We had $54,000 of tax levy funding allocated to Legion Field West Parking Lot that was also COVID-funded and that could be reallocated. There was $75,000 allocated to broadband initiatives with Astraea doing their fiber build-out on their own. This funding could be reallocated. And then we have 190, we have some money that was allocated for stormwater in TID 6. The amount needed is much less than, than what we initially allocated. And we're saying that there are about 134,000 that could be reallocated to any of those projects. ARPA funding can be allocated for any of the over budget, including our water and sewer portions. If we do not want to use alternate sources of funding, we can adjust the budget to increase the borrowing, but this is a relatively small amount considering our burrows. So staff does not recommend adjusting the borrowing for that. The only other way would be to reduce the scope of the project and I don't see a, we don't recommend that because we would be just pushing off work to a future year. So at this point, staff is recommending awarding Contract 2-22 to Rule Construction with no alternate bids at the bright bid price of $1,269,893 with the over budget covered by reallocating funding through those listed 1A through 1E. If council wishes to provide specific direction on which ones, that's fine. Otherwise, you can leave it to staff.
Okay, questions on this contract to reconstruct Cedar Street? Thank you, Howard, for identifying these additional sources of funding. It looks like without considering the amount that was slightly under budget for Hickory and Gridley, this takes about 100 and what, 227,000 extra dollars? Is that about right? And even if you use those from the 25, the 54, the 75 and the 194, you'd still have 121 left. So it looks like there's adequate funding in those sources.
Yes.
Adequate funding. Okay, anybody with questions? Comments? Comments?
No question, but I'm commenting here. I think as Howard has stated, I don't think that the city would want to cut some of the uh, project or a portion of the project when um, as he said, you know, you're just pushing it down the road. And this time here, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand and some change that there is some alternative funding. As you push that project down the road a few years, that alternative funding may not be there. And also you are putting on to the uh, to the taxpayers. So um, I think it was uh, just shy of two twenty-seven over. So you stated, Barb, there you know, still be a hundred and twenty thousand that could be allocated to another project somewhere else if possible. So I think the time to do this now is, Howard has stated in the past, you know, we're already well above beyond of what a normal road or street should be lifetime. So now's the time to do it, take care of it, as you're sitting, so.
Again, uh, from the lead call I was on that Adam and I were on today. I mean, probably the biggest thing we heard from other municipalities was they're looking at bids and the bids are significantly more than the um, than the uh, estimates were significantly more.
Yeah, and unfortunately, they kind of, we had some municipalities indicated they did go the route that, you know, we're not recommending, which is delaying projects because that's not the, you hit it on the head, Isaac, that's not the that's not the route you want to take right now.
I have a question. Uh, deals, uh, it's on the page that uh, Delta Three submitted. It's on the back. And the statement my my page says page two.
So it'd be page one ninety-one for those who are looking on the computer.
And uh, the statement is that um, rural construction has completed several projects for City of Platteville, most recently the Virgin Avenue and Pine Street Reconstruction Project and Ellen and Lower Street Reconstruction Project with no issues or concerns. Um, my question is about issues or concerns. I've heard about uh, an issue as far as Virgin Avenue where a the street was reconstructed and water was when it when it was done, the water poured into a neighboring uh, household there. And this was near four eighty-five and four sixty-five Virgin Avenue. And I believe they had to redo some of that work. And we rural construction did that, if that is correct. So I wanna wanna find out that. The next one is the contention is taking place now at Lower Street. Uh, Lower Street and um, the location at Virgin Avenue have the same design as far as the gutter that was put in. But uh, when you look at the use of the gutter over at Virgin Avenue, it has a different setup so that it works better versus the gutter that was installed at uh, Lower Street there. So I uh, I believe that is a concern, a concern which is not answered yet as far as who is responsible for putting in these things that did not function properly. Is that gonna be Delta Three? You gonna answer that question? We're, as you, I don't know how much the city manager wants us to talk about this, but this is a contention, a concern. And we haven't answered the question yet as who's responsible?
Um, to address those, rural construction, the workmanship was not the issue. Um, for the driveway on Virgin Avenue, uh, there were multiple issues taken into consideration when that driveway was completed. One of the biggest issues with that particular driveway was the large bump that was in the driveway to prevent water from going down it. So the bump was removed to help facilitate access into the property, therefore allowing water to travel down the driveway. So we can't be, basically what we did is we altered the design for ease of access. And then what it did is allow the water to drain down the driveway. That has now been corrected. That was not a, that was not a workmanship issue with rural construction, nor was the other option on Lower, Lower Street. There was so um, if we're talking about Cedar Street, um, and the comment about rural construction uh, with no issues or concerns, there was no issue with workmanship. Everything that was done on Virgin Avenue and Laura Street was as per plan and specification. However, there are circumstances of why things were designed the way they were.
But at Virgin Avenue, you replaced the concrete.
Correct.
You put in new concrete twice.
We put in concrete, the drive, we fixed the driveway again, correct?
Yep.
But that wasn't, Dan is saying it wasn't rural's problem.
It's not rural's issue.
But the situation is then it would be your responsibility as far as design.
Yes, and as I mentioned before, there were considerations up to why the design was completed. And after it was completed, the property owners decided that they did not like it. So both property owners had been consulted about taking, removing the bump from the driveway. And they agreed that, no, they would rather have the bump in the driveway than have the water come down the driveway.
And then the issue that's left then is Laura Street. And that's in contention. And the city manager, I don't know if you want to say anything about this or not?
No, I'll have an update later on that pending.
And once again, there was no workmanship issues or by by rule. Uh, I would disagree with that.
Okay, so folks, let's talk about the contract for the reconstruction of Cedar Street. Are there any other questions about the reconstruction of Cedar Street? And awarding the contract uh, without alternatives to rural construction?
Just a yeah, uh, question, um, looking at the the broadband of this, those seventy-five thousand. Um, are we, because that's been, the broadband expansion's been such a high priority, are we fairly confident that what, and I'm, I don't even know how to pronounce?
Astria.
Astria, um, that what they're bringing in is gonna compensate, I mean, get us to where where we wanted.
I think it's definitely going to help. And again, as we, as we said, that's one option that's on the table. So obviously, if the council gives the discretion for staff to kind of work through these A through E's, we're gonna take that into account and make sure that, you know, that we'll kind of review that to see if we actually have to dip into that amount.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
The other question I have for is uh, in doing streets, do you check for a presence of uh, old mines? One time I knew some people on that street and they said they had settling at their house area and do it when you set up uh, a design, do you check for settling old mines?
Generally don't look specifically for that. We also look, we also ask homeowners for their input.
That's, yes, Howard's correct. I mean, typically, we're not looking because a lot of times the maps that we have are not overly accurate. Um, at least the ones that I have, uh, we have encountered air holes before. We encountered one on Broadway Street. We encountered one uh, two years ago on Lewis Street. Um, both instances, um, a small sinkhole was created. We excavated down so far and put a concrete cap on it. And other than, I believe Lutheran Street, which was back in the late nineties, Howard, when there was actually a mine entrance. Um, we have not encountered anything large that we have to be worried about. Um, between uh, Lewis Street and Dewey Street, I know there's the old entrance to a mine. So we were aware that there were mines in the area, um, which led us to the the deduction on Lewis Street when a sinkhole, that's what it was created from. But we did not encounter anything on Dewey Street. Um, if we do encounter something like that, typically it's a matter of digging down, putting in some concrete, sealing it up.
Okay, thank you. I remember talking to the people about it. They are now deceased.
Okay, any other questions about the reconstruction contract for Cedar Street? If not, uh, is someone prepared to make some type of motion?
All right, make a motion. I would move to award the contract two dash twenty-two Cedar Street Reconstruction to rural construction with no alternative bids at the bid price of one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars with the over budget covered by reallocating funding at the discretion of staff listed in A, excuse me, one A through one E above.
And we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Lynn to award this contract two dash twenty-two for Cedar Street Reconstruction to rural construction. Uh, Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our den agenda is the award of contract three dash twenty-two uh, for inclusive playground equipment. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is uh, for the inclusive playground and this portion of the contract is for the equipment purchase only. Uh, the cost is one hundred percent funded by Community Development Block Grant uh, funding. Quotes were uh, received from four firms. The Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee reviewed the quotes and recommend award to Lee Recreation, which is the one uh, firm that uh, most closely meets their needs. Um, we will have future contracts for the other construction work. And so uh, the CDBG CV grant budgeted a million dollars for this portion of the contract. Um, the inclusive playground equipment uh, quote by Lee Recreation uh, came in at nine hundred ninety-nine thousand one fifty-nine. I believe that we have representatives from Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee in case you have questions.
And so Christina uh, Burris in the audience, as is Kim Zalinski and also Morgan Arnold. Uh, Christina, do you want to come to the microphone in case anybody has questions? So and and my understanding is this is both the equipment and the surface.
Correct, yes.
Or the rubberized surface or whatever it's called.
That's correct, yes.
Questions?
She, the only question I have would be, so the purchasing of the equipment would be from Lee Recreation and then there would be a, in the future, a bill or a um, somebody else who would install or would they be installing it as well at an additional cost?
No, that price includes installation.
Okay, so I was looking at, okay.
Right, um, the equipment, the rubberized surfacing and the installation of the equipment on that surface, but the uh, the rest of the preparation and the rest of the items are under a separate contract.
That means digging out and making a base is under a separate contract.
Yes.
As well as the bathrooms and other kinds of things.
Yes, yes. And those are split out into whether they are eligible for the COVID grants or whether they're funded through the donations.
Okay. Ken?
Okay, I'm going back to Parks and Recreation again here. Uh, it says discussions have begun for the final layout in Smith Park. Uh, Director Crawford and Director Lowell met with Design three to discuss the park's layout for sidewalks, parking, lighting, remodeling the bathrooms and so on. So when will we get a better picture of how the fencing is gonna be put in, the location of things? So I'm looking forward in the future as far as when we'll see these things.
As far as layout. We can provide those to you. Um, the 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 diagrams are ready so that they, for uh, for the bidding, so um, we can certainly provide that. Yeah, we we've been, we've been working with Christina and the committee and identifying the layouts and the pavilion and the work to the stone shelter and all the the parking lots and all that stuff. So those are, those are available and we'll provide those for you.
Okay. I walked around the whole perimeter of that park and I did notice that the the walk is um, it's asphalt, but it's uh, separating. A lot of lines are broken in in that uh, walkway. The worst part of the walkway is by the wood shelter. So this is something that has to be considered, I would say, in the near future as far as replacement. Uh, the center strip across is gonna be concrete. And I'm glad to see that's gonna be put in there. And I think concrete should always be used around the whole perimeter of the park. Because now there, there's getting to be too many spots that are been broken down and cracked and et cetera. And that needs to be considered as far as keeping the park in good shape. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on contract three dash twenty-two? This is the inclusive playground equipment and uh, the request is to award this contract to Lee Recreation at a bid price of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Contract three twenty-two inclusive playground equipment to Lee Recreation at the bid price of nine hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to award this contract. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Christina. Thank you, Kim and Morgan for coming tonight. And thank you, Howard and Bob for uh, your work with this committee.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I believe I invited you before, but just to be sure, April twenty-first, we're having our design sneak peek uh, reveal. And so we'd welcome you all to be there, five to seven at the Brodsky Center. Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on now to the next uh, contract award. Doing a lot of awarding tonight. Contract four dash twenty-two, the West Main Street Culvert. Howard?
Um, this project is to install a new culvert under West Main Street in the low area between Preston and College Drive. Initially, we thought that the sanitary sewer had been replaced in the eighties or uh, mid nineties, but it but uh, uh, it was not. So uh, we included that. Um, the current culvert is separating and causing sinkholes to develop in the sidewalk above. The flow line of the metal pipe is rusted and deteriorated. Um, it was installed in the early eighties and is at the end of its expected life. We're calling for a polymer coated galvanized metal pipe to extend the lace length of life of the pipe. Additionally, the pipe will be oversized so that in the future, we can slip another pipe inside this and still have the same or better hydraulic capacity of the pipe that's there today. We budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand to complete the project, the portion of it from the city uh, from ARPA funding and uh, the other portion from water and sewer. The base bid is over budget, uh, primarily due to the unanticipated additional sanitary sewer replacement. Water and Sewer Commission will consider their portion tomorrow. And just like in the previous uh, one, we have these um, uh, reallocations that we could possibly use from ARPA funding specifically to um, to fund the over budget portion in the water and sewer. That's why you don't see that option regarding the city tax levy one in there. So um, this is over budget, as I said, uh, thirty-seven thousand three thirty-two for water and sewer funding. Um, we have Dane County Contracting um, as the low bidder. So we recommend the award of this contract to them with the over budget amount from reallocation of ARPA funds. Dane County Contracting has not done work in Platteville in the past, but uh, uh, Delta Three has uh, some issues or has some uh, um, projects that they've done here for private contractors um, in and around Platteville.
Okay, questions on this uh, contract which would replace the culvert on West Main Street? And I believe the timing of this, Howard, just to refresh that in everybody's mind, the timing of this project would be after the reopening of Highway eighty-one that goes to Lancaster.
Correct.
So that uh we, we don't have additional issues with that. So uh
That's, that is correct.
Okay, anybody with questions on this West Main Street Culvert project?
Again, not a question, but a comment similar to the Cedar Street project is um I'd recommend uh, you know, doing it correctly the first time. Doing some math here, there's still about a hundred fourteen thousand left over from the ARPA funds if we needed to to use it. Again, instead of putting the uh, you know, kicking cane on the curb, I think we should do it the right way this time here. Means of, again, the funds are available and not put any money on the taxpayers this time, so. Excuse me, additional money on taxpayers.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a side question. It's um under D is a question for the city manager. And it's um one, two, three, fourth line down. Says, no, actually, third, I believe, say, one, two, three, the city will would reimburse up to sixty thousand toward additional cost to install stormwater management for their spans and due to well five constraints.
Yes.
And so what does that mean?
So that was with um L and M's expansion or when they actually looked at expanding their property. When we put in well number five, one of the issues with that is there are certain parameters where as far as, when you have a well, there's a certain restriction as far in regards to what, where you can put things as far as construction or anything else. So because of that being the location of the well, that did put a, I guess impediment would be the best way to put it, in the ability for L and M to expand their property outward. So because of that in their expansion, they were looking to do a stormwater pond. Well, they couldn't put that in the certain spot where normally it would go because of the well restrictions that we have. So during twenty twenty-one, we had worked with Delta Three, we worked with L and M and came up with an agreement that um if they could find an alternative location to put a stormwater pond, we would essentially cover up to sixty thousand dollars, any additional costs that they would have to do to put that well somewhere else. So that's what that particular agreement is about.
Thank you.
Here an um anticipated or projected timeline on how long that this project will go?
Be a couple of months. Um yeah, uh if, if the eighty-one project is complete as, as they project by the end of by the end of May, beginning of June, this should be done. Uh this one should be done by Labor Day. So basically in time for the start of the fall semester.
Hey, any other questions? Then we would look for a motion.
I move to award contract four dash twenty-two West Main Street Culvert to Dane County Contracting at the bid price of four hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars with the over budget amount to come from the reallocation of ARPA funds.
A motion by Kathy and a second by Lynn to award contract four dash twenty-two. Uh Candace will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is the initial resolution authorizing one point three four million dollars in general obligation bonds for street improvement projects. And uh I assume that the others are with that too. So. So who wants to start?
I can start off on this, so um we just heard about some of the projects that we're going to be doing in twenty twenty-two. And uh in order to fund the street reconstruction projects, Hickory and Glitly reconstruction and the Cedar Street reconstruction with no alternate, alternates, uh we need to uh borrow for those projects uh through the issuance of bonds. And those would be general obligation bonds. And um based on the bid information, we are recommending uh funded, funding the projects with the amount of one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um the total sizing of the bond issue for street reconstruction, including the costs of that bond issue is one million three hundred and forty thousand. And uh Brian Lima from um Ellis is here. He's our municipal advisor and he can um review the uh report with you and answer any questions that you may have about the resolutions.
Thank you Nicola, and thank you all for having me here. Uh again, like Nicola stated, we're looking at one point three four million of general obligation bonds. Uh so this would hit the debt levy. Um these are kind of no different than some of the recent uh bonding that we've done in terms of the general obligation side. Understand, we also do revenue bonds from time to time for those water and sewer projects. Uh but this would be general obligation bonds. So if you turn to kind of our packet and the executive summary, I'll just go through some of those components of the transaction, but like I said, we're kind of doing uh no different in terms of how we've uh issued debt in the past. Uh you know, advising the city. So with that said, um we walked through the project, so I'll go down to the authority section and just say that the important thing to understand here is you have a general obligation debt limit. Um at the point at which you issue the bonds, you would be at fifty-five percent of that limit with a residual amount of just north of seventeen million, so plenty of capacity. And again, um there's a a chart later in the packet that identifies how that is under your self-imposed limit um as well. So those of you that are not aware, you have five percent of your total equalized value to have of debt outstanding. You self-impose three point five percent, uh so about eighty percent of your state statute amount. So we're under both of those amounts uh still with this issuance. Um going down to the term and call feature, like the other uh proposed issuances in the past, we want to afford the city that financial flexibility to prepay the debt, uh should you find the need to. Um certainly, while we're still in a rising interest rate environment, it is uh lower interest rates when you compare it to the long term. So you may find the reason for savings in the future. Uh otherwise, you may find the reason for structure. Uh certainly, there may be items that come up in terms of how you want to change uh the payment structure that you have. That said, uh the next kind of uh blocks within our executive summary identify certain components in terms of the parameters that we offer to the bidders. And with that said, we're recommending that you do a fully competitive sale, no different than kind of bidding your public projects that you walk through in that you want to see who's going to pay for the lowest costs um for this transaction at the time that you hold the sale. So with that said, you know, we, this will be bank qualified, that opens up who can bid on it. Um we're going to be looking to offer premium and discount pricing as well as term bonds. So that said, you may note that this is a relatively lighter issuance, uh just over a million dollars. So we want to keep those maturities attractive and you'll see later that those are about a hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty much the minimum right now that we're kind of recommending for these. Otherwise, you do see that terming of bonds. Um what, and all that is, is on the back end, they combine uh in terms of what investors bid on is, would be like two years of payments instead of one. Your payments remain the same. Uh so just in case you see that term feature, I just wanted to identify that is what that is. Um and then uh you would be getting a rating on this. The rating agency is S and P and that's double A minus. We would expect kind of no difference with no significant changes uh based on our understanding of the city's financials. So um we'll be talking with S and P through this process again. Uh but that, that said, there's kind of no other uh significant, you know, changes in terms of how we're issuing this. Uh if you'd like, I would uh ask that you just kind of turn to uh the second table uh within the numerical section that's labeled per- projected impact of proposed projects. Um and in the middle section, uh starting in the middle of this graph and moving to the right kind of shows the impact in terms of what the specific issuance is, the left portion being your existing um standing in terms of net debt service levy. So uh the main components here is we're generally doing level principle. Um and that's to kind of keep future capacity in terms of that levy change, the total impact here being about forty-three uh thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, but then that levy goes down. So um certainly, as you tackle future projects, you want that future capacity uh in order to issue debt so that that debt service levy doesn't kind of go in that roller coaster. So with that said, that's kind of uh what we're looking for in terms of structure here and recommending. And then uh the proposed kind of estimated interest rates at these time. The one caveat that I've been saying to communities um on a daily basis is we're in the market Monday through Thursday, about five times a day. These rates are rising and rising fast. The last chart in our packet kind of identifies a three-year look at that. You'll note, we're kind of in one of the higher accelerations right now at about ten to fifteen basis points a week. Um so it's a good time to issue and do it now before that continues. You may note in that three-year trend, typically there may be some cooling off uh towards later summer and into uh fall and winter. However, the disadvantage there is knowing what the Fed's been talking about in terms of what they're looking to do with interest rates. This trend could continue and surpass what's previously happened. So we do think it's a good time to issue to uh make sure you lock in on those interest rates. You're bidding the project, so you're ready to spend these funds as well. And instead of spending that cash um and hoping that the rates go down later, you can kind of lock into those rates. So uh just some of the methodology as we walk through these conversations with staff and wanted to make sure um that's reflective in terms of our opinion as well. Um so with that said, those are, those are the impacts. You can see the, the tax rate there is the final right column uh in this chart, uh the highest being the two forty-four. And certainly that can change, uh you know, based on where your equalized value goes. And if you're wondering what we project there, we're, we do it relatively conservatively at one percent um unless there's a planned TIF closure or something like that. So um just kind of understand uh the impact in terms of that debt service. The future tables, I've kind of walked through verbally, but if you'd like me to identify specific components of it, uh just let me know.
Okay, questions of either Brian or Nicola?
I know, maybe if this might be for you, do you recall what last year's general obligation bonds were for street projects and the amount?
Why recall the amount?
Yeah.
Um I want to say it was about one point two million.
I think we've been borrowing about, we're borrowing about while we're retiring. Other questions? See that take a dip when you go out with our, you know. Can you arrange that, Brian?
Uh I'm trying, I'm trying. Yeah.
I think it's in your contract somewhere, isn't it?
I'd be making a lot of money.
Okay, if there are no questions, then there are four separate motions. One is to authorize the bonds, one is to adopt a resolution to publish a notice to the electors. One is to adopt the resolution providing for the sale. I've asked only three. Why does it say four? All right, what does it say for? Sample affirmative motions for separate, but you only give me three. So I think there's really only three. I think the fourth thing was the pre-sale report, which we don't have to
Oh, all the attachments.
Take any actions.
Four attachments.
Correct.
Three resolutions.
Correct. Three resolutions. Okay, so the first one would be to authorize one point three four million dollars in general obligation bonds. General obligation meaning they're paid for through tax revenue rather than revenue bonds which are paid through uh by, which you pay through fees. So one point three four in general obligation bonds is the first motion.
I move to adopt initial resolution twenty-two oh five, authorizing one million three hundred and forty thousand. Excuse me, kind of obligation bonds for street improvement projects.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Jason to adopt resolution twenty-two oh five authorizing one point three four million in general obligation bonds for street improvement. Candace will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is a a resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to this bond issue. So this would allow our direct staff to publish a notice.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-two oh six, directing publication of notice to electors relating to.
A motion by Lynn, second by Eileen to adopt twenty-two oh six, will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols? Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the final is resolution of this group is resolution twenty-two oh seven, providing for the sale of not to exceed one point three four million dollars in general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty twenty-two A.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Kathy to adopt resolution twenty-two oh seven. Candace will vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and thank you, Brian, for coming and thank you Nicola for your work on this. Okay, next on our action agenda is the Indian Park Historical Mark.
Yes, so um as you guys remember, at our last meeting, we kind of introduced this topic. Uh we have had a dedicated group of volunteers that have been working very tirelessly on a grant, uh that was a combination between uh their group and also the city uh over the last year in regards to trying to get a better understanding of Indian Park and how we kind of project that message out to the community, whether you're a resident, a guest or a visitor. Um so what we are essentially looking for tonight is authorization from the common council to uh work on the application that would formally be sent to the Wisconsin Historical Society uh that would allow for a historical marker to be located uh in Indian Park. And what that would do is there's an application process that basically we have to submit. Um we then work with a team at the Wisconsin Historical Society as well as archae- archaeologists and kind of looking at where specifically we can put this marker and then kind of identifying what it uh potentially will say. Um so there's kind of a sample of what is a draft uh that obviously is not set in stone. Uh those will be conversations that will continue to work with the group um as well as staff and kind of do. But then essentially what will be happening is if we get approval for that, then it kind of moves to the next phase, which is creating the actual marker. Um and as you can see in the packet, there's a list of kind of options uh from, you know, kind of the cheapest to the most expensive. And those conversations would be done in partnership with trying to go after some grant opportunities, working with the group in applying for different grant funding. And if not, worst case scenario, then identifying somewhere in the budget essentially that we would be able to uh uh kind of incorporate those costs. Uh so what we're looking for tonight is essentially from the council to authorize city staff to work with the members of the Friends of Indian Park Committee on the formal application request for a Wisconsin Historical Marker to be added to Indian Park.
Okay, and is there a money obligation with this? Are you asking for money uh in the amount of?
Yes, so it would be in the amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars if that would be the worst case scenario.
Yeah, but that's only for the marker.
Yes, correct. And the two hundred and fifty dollar.
And that doesn't include any posts.
No. Right, but there's up.
Okay, just, I mean, we need to know if we're voting on money and if we're voting on money, how much and where it's coming from. I do have two people in the audience who have uh registered to speak on this. Crystal, Praska and Lord Laurie Grainey.
Ask out to Eddie Division Street, Platteville. Our spokesperson, Dr. Teresa Burns, who spoke last time, is unable to attend tonight and Lori Gray is in the audience here. Basically, I wanted to give you an update on what was going on with the state historic marker for Indian Park. We have contacted Amy Roseborough and uh for those of you don't know, she's the state archaeologist concerning the possibility of putting the marker on a large stone rather than having to dig into the park since it is now not only cataloged as a cemetery, but is an archaeological site that requires any ground disturbance to be approved by a state archaeologist. Amy indicated, and I quote her, that this plan quote works for her. She also referred us to Fitzie Heindl, who is the State Historical Markers Program Coordinator. He indicated that this is the preferred method at this site. This means we do not need the poles and their installation costs. Since the park cemetery was originally out of the city limits, we thought this might be more appropriate having the marker installed on a stone because it would reflect more of the natural features that were there years ago before any building surrounded the area. Um we have seen many examples of this online and in fact, Mr. Heindl also included an example of this in his email with our, with our answer. Uh that, so that's the good news. We don't have to pay for the poles as well as the fact that we have a company that is willing to donate and place the stone in the park. Uh we are also working on another company to install it. And if we have to have anything shaved in front of the rock, but of course, depending on the size of the sign, which is still being worked on, what size rock we would need. Um we are willing to work with you on funding for this. However, it would be a great gesture if the council could offer to fund a portion of this since the city does own the land. What we're simply asking is a green light, like Adam said, to proceed with the application process since the city manager or city representative's name must be on the paperwork due to the fact that the landowner must submit the application. We would also like to request that we could maybe work with one person on this so we can move forward in a timely manner. We can work on the wording. We have to put supporting research documentation in this application and process it through the Wisconsin State Historical Society. We will then need the city official to file the application when this process is approved by the Wisconsin State Historical Society and the final wording. And of course, then the size of the marker would be finalized. At this time, the exact cost would be known. And the application then must indicate how the signage would be funding, funded. We have gone to every commission that's involved in this to keep everybody on the same page. We've gone through that. We started out with the Historic Preservation Commission. We discussed what we were doing, the Parks Commission, and now City Council. Um, since we must work closely with the Wisconsin State Historical Society and the state marker coordinator on working, on wording, we won't have the exact amount of the cost at this time anyway. Um, we do believe we're trying to get the cost down as much as we can that it would probably be one of the larger of the two signs due to the fact that to tell the history of this park in a nutshell, we think we're gonna have to at least have a larger sign. Um, we, of course, could report back to you on final numbers, but we just really hope we just get the green light to go with this. And then we can work on funding together. Like I said, as we researched this land, it was apparent that in our opinion, it's ground zero for the beginnings of Platteville, and the story not only reflects the history of the time, but gives us a picture of social and political issues present as well. Back in October of twenty twenty, the council saw the importance of the history of the park and designated it locally historic. Given a question?
Hey, questions of Crystal or of Adam? Adam, do you want a not to exceed price in?
I, yeah, I would say if we could do a not to exceed the most expensive, then I can work with.
Not to exceed five thousand dollars?
Correct. And then I can work with the group and we can see.
And uh, so the question then would uh, and, and frankly, I, I concur that trying to work with seven people on, yeah. Yeah, it'd be great if you could work with one person. So I don't, I, I think that, I don't know, does anybody else have an objection to them working with like one person instead of seven at a time? Yeah, I think you're seeing a lot of this. So, um, uh, this then would move, this motion would move to authorize city staff to work with members here. And uh, on the formal application and at a price not to exceed five thousand, we would assume that these monies would come from.
It would come on, yes, either parks or possibly the contingency if it.
Contingency or maybe even one of the trusts that are out there.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Any questions of Crystal, of, of Lori, or of uh Adam? If there are none, then I would uh request a motion.
I move to authorize city staff to work with members of the Friends of Indian Park Committee on the formal application request for a Wisconsin Historical Marker to be added to Indian Park at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to authorize uh continuing this process at a Wisconsin Historical Marker to uh what we call Indian Park at a cost not to exceed five thousand, and Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, next on our agenda is another, our final agenda item, which is the campground fee update. Bob?
Yeah, uh, as brought to attention last meeting, uh, work has been done on the campground, upgrading it from seven original sites to now fifteen sites. Um, all the excavating and the gravel, the base has been put in. The electric service is now updated on all sites, so now uh each site, all fifteen, will have a fifty amp, a twenty amp, and a thirty amp service. Um, so that is done. The water is being brought uh to all the sites. Uh, so now, uh, and our grand opening is going to be May sixth, so now we're just asking simply the council to approve. Uh, currently, it is fifteen dollars for the site and then ten dollars for the electric. Now all sites have uh electric to it, so now we're just asking to change the fee to a flat twenty-five dollars.
Okay, questions?
Um, I guess I'm just curious. Bob, is that, is twenty-five dollars for a campsite? Is that typical?
That's still, yeah, it's still pretty cheap.
Pretty low.
Normally, that's forty dollars.
Especially, yeah, pretty low.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess that is my question. Um, do you have a lot of reservations for twenty twenty?
We had a lot of requests already about when it's going to be there. Uh, they were hoping it is already open, but uh, obviously, you know, with the weather. So May sixth will be the official opening day, but we have people. Now you can reserve it online too. Just today, we implemented the new website for it, so it's real easy. You can click on it and reserve. And so now uh those coming out of town will know that they get their site and it's reserved that way. It's still inexpensive, but we had the discussion at Parks and Rec Committee, and we talked about the cost and I guess uh if we were sold out all the time, uh then I guess we would recommend it go up, but until that happens, probably we'll keep it at the twenty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Their time limit to how long? We decided that.
Yeah, two weeks. That was Ken's question last week, but yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Then do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the city of Platteville fee schedule change for campground reservation to be twenty-five dollars per site.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Eileen to update the fee schedule for campground reservations to be a flat twenty-five dollars, which will include the electric. We'll vote. Candace? Shanley?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna now move into the uh information part of our agenda, and the first item there is reso, is a resolution relative to a DNR stewardship grant. So Howard?
Yes, thank you. Um, this resolution would authorize the city managers to submit for DNR outdoor recreation grant applications for the Moundview Park Connector Trail and Main Street Connector Trail Projects. Uh, previously, we had submitted uh uh those trails to the DOT for their transportation alternatives program grants. Uh, we have not heard back from those yet. If they are approved, those are eighty-twenty grants. And if we also get these DNR grants, the DNR grant would cover the twenty percent city match required. Um, and that's similar to the way um the uh Moundview State Trail was funded. We do not have to accept the grants, even if they are awarded, so even if if one is awarded and one is not, the city council still has the option of, of uh declining any or both of the grants. The reason why we did not submit uh for the Southeast Rail Corridor tran- uh trail is because under the TAP program, that's scheduled farther out, and there's a new DNR cycle in between. So if we're successful, we would end up um reapplying to the DNR for that one two years from now. Uh, our current grant application window closes on May first, so um staff is recommending approval of this resolution.
Okay, questions? So uh Howard is telling us that if we get the TAP grant, it's eight, eighty-twenty, and if we would get this DNR grant, it would, it would pay the twenty. Uh, do you apply for a certain amount, Howard? Because you said it could pay up to fifty percent.
We, we would, uh, I'll be working with Angie on this as our, as our grant writer, but I, I would recommend that we uh ask for the whole fifty percent just in case we don't get it, and then, then it's back to the city whether or not to accept uh the fifty-fifty through the DNR.
Okay, other questions on these? And this would be for the trail that comes up from on uh the current, it would go all the way from the current uh Roundtree Branch Trail up into Moundview Park. That's one of them. And the other one is uh comes from.
From roughly the uh Dog Park, and it goes up behind um the buildings there on Valley Road to East Main Street uh between Skate Park and the museums.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll see this back on our agenda next month or next meeting for act, as an action item. Okay, let's move on to the next one then, which is a word of contract thirteen dash twenty-two for Roundtree Branch steam ba, stream bank restoration. Howard?
Thank you. Um, yes, uh, in our uh capital improvement project list, we had uh a project for the stream bank restoration. We did a similar project two years ago on university property and down by the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is basically a, a, a similar type of a situation. This would uh take care of three locations along the Roundtree Branch. Uh, Site Two is what we're calling it, is both sides of the stream up and downstream of that trail bridge and the fishing pier uh by Fiesta Cancun Super Eight. Uh, we've had flooding and bank erosions, and we want to protect that area. Site number four is on Valley Road, the outside bend of the stream uh near the Davison Water Plant. Um, it had some stabilization in two thousand and eleven when we did Valley Road. But a couple of years ago, during one of the high-water events, we had a section fail. We, we did an emergency repair. This would help stabilize that bend. Um, and then Site Six would be along both sides of the stream under the East Mineral Street Bridge. The bridge was installed a little over twenty years ago. Um, we, you know, made it so that there would be room for the trail underneath. Uh, the MPO Trail Project completed the trail underneath. Um, but when flooding does happen, it causes sediment to deposit on the trail. Volunteers uh scrape the mud off the trail uh in order for it to be used. So this would include a concrete apron to help direct the floodwater and sediments away from the trail a, as much as possible. Um, and do some additional rip wrapping in that area to, to help protect the stream bank. Uh, Lowbrider is rural construction. Um, we just talked about them earlier. Excuse me. In this case, the uh, the bid is under budget. Um, the funding is split between the city's ARPA money, excuse me, and DNR. And so we do have some ARPA funding that could be reallocated. Pardon me. Uh, so we're recommending that this be awarded next time.
Okay, questions on these uh stream bank stabilization projects? Money's in hand.
Correct.
There's no question, then those, this item will be moved to action for the next meeting also. All right, uh, fire station professional design services, RFP submission.
Yes, so um as we've been talking about, obviously, in twenty twenty-one, the city of Platteville completed a fire department conference of analysis, which determined the current location of the Platteville Fire Department would not be suitable for renovations and expansion. Uh, the analysis recommended the potential for a new fire station to be located at the former OE Grade Learning Center Building located at one fifty-five West Lewis Street. Uh, so in twenty twenty-one, the city of Platteville gained ownership of the learning center by entering into a transfer agreement with the school district of Platteville. Uh, as was just earlier in the meeting, we have received seven million dollars in a uh house appropriation uh that can go towards the uh potential new construction of a fire station. Uh, so one of the things we did then as a next step was submitted a request for proposals uh to have either an engineering or an architectural firm come in and do kind of four processes, uh look at a schematic design, uh overall design development, uh creating the construction documents, and then obviously assisting the city of Platteville with uh bidding and possible construction administration if we so chose. Uh, so we had a deadline to submit those proposals was Thursday, March thirty-first, and the city staff received proposals from the following architectural and engineering firms. Uh, you can see the list on there. We had ten firms kind of submit from various places, uh from Ashland, Wisconsin, Spring Green, Green Bay, uh South Bend, uh Indiana, and Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Lake Dalton, Wisconsin, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, uh Hopkins, Minnesota, Madison, Wisconsin, Kekona. Uh, so what city staff is currently working on is the creation of a fire department building committee. Uh, this committee actually has been formed and met actually last night uh was the first meeting, and primarily what this group is being tasked with is first and foremost reviewing the RFP submissions and providing the common council with a recommendation. Uh, the group then will be meeting consistently to review the RFP recipients' work and continuing to discuss building and fundraising options for the project. Uh, the plan will be for the committee to report back to the common council, obviously via the city manager. Uh, so currently, as far as the budget and fiscal impacts, we're currently in the process of reviewing the cost assessments provided by the various firms who submit a proposal. Uh, these estimates will be shared and reviewed with the building committee, and a recommendation will be provided to the council at a future council meeting. Uh, grant opportunities that would cover the cost of architectural services are being reviewed as well. And further, city staff are reviewing the potential for receiving private donations to cover either the entire or a portion of the cost to complete the RFP. Uh, city staff is also analyzing available city funds to cover the cost of the proposal and will provide further recommendations after the proposal have been received from potential firms. Uh, so right now, uh, scheduled permitting, city staff and the committee hope a recommendation will be available for the common council considered at the April twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, that may be a little bit zealous, just kind of looking at it. So what we're looking at right now is the first meeting that we had last night. Uh, we're hoping to get down to about three firms and then actually either having those firms come in or do some type of Zoom conversation with the group. Uh, so realistically, again, we want to make sure we're doing this right, so we're probably looking at potentially May tenth to have this recommendation come back to the council. But obviously, if we can get that done earlier, we'll keep you in the loop and kind of let you know. Uh, but what we'll be looking for then is when we have this come back to you as an action item, uh, we'll be reporting kind of the dollar values and how we anticipate being able to fund that uh and then looking for the common council to essentially authorize that firm to kind of come in and start the process.
Questions?
Too many questions. I see, and this might be for Dan, actually, is about the third one from the bottom. I see a Brutton slash Delta Three out of Hopkins, Minnesota. Are you involved with that one then? Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, Adam, would it be fair to say that if any council member wants to look at any of these ten, they could?
Yes, certainly. They are either in my office, or if you want, you can email me and I will send them to you electronically. And hopefully you can open them. If not, we'll figure it out.
You may want to look, Adam, not online.
To be bright.
There are pages and pages. Yeah. Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is twenty twenty-one budget carryovers for twenty twenty-two. Nicola?
So it's the time of year that we uh consider uh any projects that may have not completed in twenty twenty-one that we want to um assign those funds into twenty twenty-two. Uh, typically, you know, levy-supported CIP projects, or sometimes there's um amounts that were budgeted in the uh general budget for, in the operating budget for um a particular purpose and for one reason or another, those funds are being requested to be carried over. Um, so if you look at the schedule that was attached to the staff note, you can see here that uh there was uh, uh, I guess you really call it four projects, five items that are, are CIP projects that are being requested to be carried over. Um, so that would be the City Hall Exterior Maintenance, which we did, did not complete in twenty twenty-one, and so the carryover request there is for nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And then um we have been budgeting for a couple of years now to do a camera system project. Um, this project uh began with a PD and now has um expanded. Project. This project began with a P D and now has expanded to being a citywide camera system. We have some upper funding towards that as well. But these were funds that were budgeted and carried over. In in a previous year, and now also we would like to carry over into twenty twenty two. So that those two carryovers would be twenty thousand, twenty thousand and twenty five thousand. And then the train's safety fence replacement was a project that began in twenty twenty one but did not complete. And so the remaining funds to be carried over for that project were thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty three. And then finally, for C I P, a campground improvements and expansion project. Again. It was partially completed in twenty twenty one and will complete in twenty twenty two and. The funds to be carried over are eight thousand three hundred and twenty three. And so that gives a total request for carryover of C I P fund amounts of seventy six thousand one hundred and twenty five. And we also have some general fund requested carryovers. And so we have in the administration professional services and outlay line items. Three thousand five hundred towards administration slash finance intern. We also are requesting for an intern funding and grant writing and tracking funding. From the city manager contingency line item, four thousand seven hundred and sixty. And the city manager grant writing line item, two thousand one eighty. And I'd just like to point out for these three items that essentially what we're doing here is some. We have had the great blessing of having a large amount of funding pouring into the city right now from various. Sources for various purposes. It's an exciting time for the city of Platteville, but it does add some additional workload. In relate in relation to tracking those funds responding to the requirements and compliance. For those various funding bodies and what they require. And so we. Actually have an intern that we're currently using. Carol Swain is in our audience tonight. And and we're very grateful for his work and he's been helping us on various things and we may have an opportunity to. Add additional help if need be for some specific grant funding. Administration. So that's what those items are about. And then moving on, we have unspent funds in the police radio maintenance line item. Again, this was. For radio batteries that are quite expensive. They were ordered in twenty twenty one, but due to supply chain issues. Were not shipped or billed until this year, so the request is to carry over that eight hundred and fifty dollars from last year's budget. And then finally, we have an item for the museum. And Eric can hear and certainly can answer questions that you may have about this, but just to provide you with a brief overview. So in twenty twenty, the museum budget was supplemented by grants that were awarded to the friends. For museum for the Friends of the Museums for operating expenses. And in, I guess, in twenty twenty and in the early part of twenty twenty one, the council approved carrying over those funds. For seed money for a capital campaign. That capital campaign did not take place in twenty twenty one, and so the request that's for you is to. Use those funds, twelve thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars to reduce the amount of. Contribution from the Friends of the Museum to the museum, which is budgeted at forty seven thousand and to reduce that to. Thirty four thousand seven hundred and sixty six dollars. So with that, the total general fund carryover request is twenty three thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars. So any questions about any of those items?
Questions about any of the items? Otherwise. We would look to move those forward for action at our next meeting. All right, moving on in the agenda then, the next item is an update on the city. Goals, the first quarter report.
Yeah, it's crazy to think we are already a quarter through twenty twenty two, but we are. So it's now time to kind of bring you an update on everything that staff has kind of been working on. So. Again, this is something we bring you every quarter, just kind of updating the city goals and where we're at. So. Again, we have had a lot of great conversations and movement on the new fire station. So that is something that we continue to work on and have now officially received the funding. It's on to as kind of nickel indicated, every time we get funding, there's a lot of behind the scenes paperwork. So now it's an application to get the money, to get the money, to get the money. So. We're doing that behind the scenes, but we'll get there. But we know we have the money. It's just we have to get the money. As far as the joint tied and common council, that is slated to occur on Tuesday, May tenth. So that's where they'll be coming in front of you as a group and kind of discussing everything they've been working on and looking to kind of finalize the community guide that they want to get out. Communication specialist is Richards and I have been working on kind of continuing the Platteville Pickaxe series as well as the Living Local Loving It. You know, she has been doing a tremendous job with everything going on in the city bouncing around from project to project, as well as continuing to do the five three eight one eight. If you notice today, we just started another kind of new marketing campaign, which is, we're glad you asked. And so that was something that just went out today, talking about kind of code red. So when we kind of get those questions that. We typically hear from kind of residents or visitors, that's kind of a new thing we're trying to do to promote that. One of the things that we're continuing to kind of look at in the twenty twenty three budget, we're going to be discussing with the council about we created an actual marketing line item. That we can start doing some promotional things, looking at videos, different advertisements, we can talk about putting in the paper, things like that. We continue to partner with our Platteville Economic Development Partners on the creation of a shared marketing campaign. So that is something now that that group has kind of been working on. We had a consultant come in and kind of create a whole new branding. Not a whole new branding, but a different branding effort. Now what we're trying to do is figure out the best way to kind of roll that out to the community. So we continue to work on that. Historical storylines, we're going to be working on in quarter three and four of this year, so we'll be continuing to look at that. Both communication specialists, Richards and I are looking at kind of the mottos and the Tommyknocker logo that have been kind of, we started in twenty twenty one and looking to roll out in twenty twenty two. So we'll continue to keep everybody updated on that. In regards to kind of development and prosperous economy. We continue to try to work with obviously Pedic and all of our partners on recruiting as many businesses as we can. We're currently in the process of working on RFPs for various service providers from the audit assessors, financial advisors. We've been working with staff on that timeline, and as you've seen, we started to bring those out. We'll continue to do that for the rest of the year. We are continuing to work with kind of private developers on subdivisions, homes and smaller lots. We'll keep that going. And then the city manager intern is actually in the process of finalizing the organizational chart comparison for various municipalities. So we will be starting, hopefully, we're planning to do the museum as kind of our Kickstarter department. For our long term kind of financial staffing analysis. So that's something that we'll be working on. We've had a couple of different conversations this year with the Platteville School District, the Y M C A and the Park and Rec Committee. On the creation of kind of a business plan for a community center. So that's something, obviously, as you've seen, the the school district has. Certainly has information out kind of in relates to that. So we've had a lot of conversations about how we can continue to be utilized. And we'll be continuing to have those conversations in quarter two and quarter three. The museum continues to work on their collection documentation. I'm working right now with kind of legislatures to continue kind of the broadband discussions that Kathy Cobb talked about. So we'll continue to look at potentially in quarter three and quarter four, having a more. Forum where we can bring in some legislatures and talk about that. And then, as you've kind of seen throughout this meeting, we've been working a lot of on our projects. So we have the twenty twenty two C I P projects going forward. Our water and sewer projects, our park projects that we've been working on, the museum projects. We've been working, obviously, on the camera system that's been talking about. We're hoping right now we have that RFP being reviewed by our I T S provider. And then we're hoping kind of here in quarter two to quarter four to get that out and start looking for potential firms to look at that. As Bob indicated, we've been working on the campground registration system, and that is raring to go. We've been working on the inclusive playground project, and we again will be working with the U W Platteville and the D N R and kind of looking at a urban forestry replacement plan as Bob kind of alluded to. He's been working for trees, trees and trees and loves trees up the line too. So we'll continue to kind of look into that and deal with that. So. That is the short, short version. Obviously, if there's any additional questions you guys want, please let me know and I'll kind of dig into those and get you that. But there you go.
Questions about? I think you guys have been busy.
A little bit.
Are there any promising? Forward for the subdivisions, any promising projects that might happen?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some conversations that we had. So obviously, the one we know about is Menard, behind the Menards, the subdivision there, they've broken ground on about ten. So in the next year here, they're looking to do about twenty. So that certainly is exciting. We continue to have conversations with, you know, the Golden Heights area and kind of what is going on there and that plan. Well, kind of as I've had some meetings with that firm looking or that individual looking at doing that project. He's planning on kind of coming back here and going through the planning commission process and talking about. After kind of hearing from, you know, the neighborhood and kind of some of the concerns, looking at retooling that a little bit. So yeah, and we continue to kind of meet with, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk with potentially a senior living developer. That did the project up in, I believe, Dickieville, that area. So they're actually going to meet to see if there's anything that makes sense here. And, you know, we're continuing to kick the tires on any. Any conversation we can have, because as we know, I'm sure as everybody hears, you know, when you're talking to constituents, housing is. Is always an issue. So the sooner we can try to continue to address that, we. We certainly try.
You know what the price range is for the houses over by Menards?
I believe if I were, I mean, Isaac probably is going to know better than I am, but they're in the three hundred. I mean, there's a couple of different options that they have, but I mean, you're looking at like the three hundred and twenty thousand, you know, if you want to go higher, it could be four fifty, but I don't know.
I think the base one was three twenty five. The average one was three, three forty five, three sixty five. I think there was one in the four hundred range, so.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. If anybody has any specific questions afterward, I'm sure Adam would be more than happy to answer them. Now you can move on to the quarterly financial report.
Yes, so this is something new that we wanted to kind of pitch to you guys that came up. So as a recent common council meeting, a quarterly financial report was requested by council members if it could be provided to showcase kind of areas where the city is succeeding. On track or below in revenue expenditure projections. So. Below what you have is a breakdown of estimated revenues as of three thirty one, twenty twenty two. As you can see in the table, some fund areas such as the airport finds and forfeitures in the Brodsky Center are showing as exceeding the quarterly average. So I would say if you're quarter, you got twenty five percent. So anything that's above that, you're doing pretty well. What we want to also make aware of, although there are other areas such as taxes and debt service, they're going to always showcase artificially low. As most of those payments are not finalized either till quarter two or later. So that's nothing to be alarmed about. That's pretty typical. And again, then there's going to be some accounts that have fund transfers that occur throughout the year. So therefore, they're also going to show to be artificially low in percentage. So there's nothing really we're seeing in this table that is really causing us any concern right now. But our anticipation is every quarter we'll kind of update this and bring this back to you. And if we're starting to see things that are. Trends or kind of questions or concerns, we're going to make you guys aware of that. So you kind of anticipate what's going on with the budget there. So then we did the same thing kind of in the expenditure area where we provided a breakdown of the estimated expenditures as a three thirty one of twenty twenty two. As you can see in the table, again, most expenditure accounts are showing to be in good standing in relation towards the percentage of budgeted quarterly average, which will be twenty five percent. The debt service fund is is going to show a higher percentage due to typically, we have a larger principal payment that occurs in quarter one. And then as the year goes on, we kind of make that up. So you're going to see that in some areas where it may be artificially high. Kind of if you look at the below table as well, we want to provide the common council with a little more detail regarding the general fund expenditures. So I created the following table. As you can see, most of our general fund account expenditures are showing as being in line with the quarterly average or well below. The insurance account is currently at a hundred and ninety one thousand eight hundred and twenty nine dollars and seventy nine cents. When we budgeted for a hundred and sixty nine thousand six hundred and therefore showing a larger percent increase over the budget. City staff received notification from our insurance carrier, the premium costs were increasing over the previous estimate we had received during the budget cycle. So one of the main factors for this is obviously due to the market fluctuation. Additionally, when reviewing our policy coverage, staff identified and implemented additional coverage recommendations from our insurance carrier. So city staff also anticipates will receive a dividend check of around fourteen thousand. Which will be applied to decrease the amount of the overage. Another area, the municipal buildings account is currently showing an increase above over the quarterly percentage. Historically, again, this account is going to have some ebbs and flows. So if you think about it during quarter one, that's typically winter. You're going to have more higher expenses, whereas then in kind of quarter two and quarter three, you may see lower expenses. So. Just something again, city staff is going to continue to kind of monitor those increases we are seeing in the utility prices. As well as getting a better financial picture of the true cost of O E Gray Learning Center. Again, that was an estimate we kind of did as we kind of hone in on that, we'll be able to kind of look at that full picture as we go on. The P C A N account was another area currently showing where we were at six thousand three hundred dollars when we budgeted five thousand. And therefore showing a larger increase over the budget. Historically, seventy five hundred dollars was budgeted in the past. But in twenty twenty one, the city was built for five thousand. Due to a slight increase by P C A N and their annual rate fees, city staff will be reviewing how to factor these changes into future budgets. And as you guys know, for that have been in the budget process, we do, we are very conservative in our budget process. We do that on purpose so that when we know we have some of these areas that we do see anticipated increases. We can kind of absorb those in the overall budget. But that's something we kind of, you know, want to in future bring to your attention, just so you can kind of see some of the things we try to look at or that I try to review here on kind of a quarterly basis. So below is kind of a breakdown of the estimated building utility costs and fuel uses costs. So as you can see overall, you know, although we do have some areas, particular buildings that may be higher right now, overall, we're at about twenty four percent of the budget, so right where we would expect to be. And then fuel usage, we're actually down. And again, that kind of ebbs and flows, so we anticipate that that may go up. So then one of the other things that I kind of wanted to provide you with is I've done this in previous municipalities I've been in is give you the quarterly budget monitoring report. So what I try to do is just pick out twelve kind of key revenue line items and then twelve key expenditure line items. And kind of give you a little graphical representation. So. Obviously, the thumbs up symbol is a indication that we have collected money above revenue projections or are currently forecasting to exceed. On track means we're pretty much expected, we're thinking we're going to be good. You know, we're not seeing anything that's causing us to have any concern. The I kind of showcases areas where as staff, we're keeping an eye on it. You know, we're not necessarily to the point where we're concerned. But either the current projection is showing we may be a little short, or it might be something we want to review. The red flag is basically where staff has identified, okay, we know that this is either well over budget. And now we're anticipating or looking at what we need to do in the next budget to try to address that. So what you can kind of see here in the attachment are kind of twelve areas that we focus on in the general fund. So you can see right now as an example, number two, local room tax. You know, we're right now have taken in about forty two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. We're definitely forecasted to exceed what we budgeted. So that's why you're currently seeing that as a thumbs up. General transportation aid, we're kind of monitoring that. We get two kind of big payments. So right now we are looking at, we may see a slight decrease, but we'll kind of continue to monitor that as we go along. Again, with some of our liquor and mold licenses, we're on track for that. Parking violations, we're currently looking to exceed. And then the interest on our general fund, we're kind of, you know, anticipated to be on track there. And then just kind of looking at the expenditure area, we've got about twelve that we looked at. As you can see, we have a red flag on insurance, just like we talked about. There were two areas that we kind of noticed. You know, the cost came in much higher than we thought. So that's something we're going to be analyzing as we go into the next budget cycle to kind of determine, okay, do we need to increase that line item in the budget next year? Or do we need to have some conversations with our insurance carrier about some potential changes that need to be made? Otherwise, you can see in some of the other expenditure areas, I tried to provide you with gas and oil. Street maintenance, some different refuse collections, those are all currently on track right now. But our intention is to try to every quarter kind of bring this to you. And then one of the things we're also anticipating is as we get probably to quarter three. We're actually going to do a more kind of comprehensive deep dive for you into the capital improvement budget. And kind of show you, okay, here's everything we budgeted, here's where we came in, and here's kind of what we're seeing. So you guys can get a little bit better snapshot. Then kind of as, you know, we tend to have to kind of throw everything at you during the budget cycle, which we know with numbers and, you know, Nicola and I are definitely financial nerds, but. We know some people, that's not your forte. So we try to bring this to you to make it a little bit, you know, easier to kind of understand or a better picture. So that's the intention. So obviously, going forward, if there are things you would like to see us including here. You know, this is kind of the first draft version of providing you guys something to look at. We're definitely open to making any changes or recommendations, but thought this would be kind of a good first kick. Nothing against the cat, but you know, just trying to kind of show you guys what we have. So. Any questions?
Questions?
I. I love it. It's it's. Really good information, and I appreciate your efforts to put it together.
Comments or questions? Okay, we're at the end of our agenda. We do have a meeting next Tuesday at five o'clock. It's our organizational meeting for the council. I did, Candace did prepare a sheet that was on our desk tonight. It's also time to select your preferences for committees for the upcoming year. So take that home, bring it back, and we'll see where we go from there.
We do have a work session slated for the twenty six, just as a reminder, at four thirty. That's where we have kind of the state of Wisconsin's economic development group is kind of coming in and going to give a presentation. Yeah, Peter Barca and kind of that team, they haven't been here in a while, so they wanted to come in and kind of talk to. The city, but also some key leaders. So that obviously will be open to anybody that wants to kind of attend.
Looking for one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the twenty sixth.
Four thirty. Four thirty.
Four thirty, okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, I guess Candace will vote.
Shanley.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Killian. Dos.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Adjourn. Thank you all.